Good evening and welcome everyone. The Brea Chamber of Commerce and the League of Women Voters are proud to present their 2014 Brea City Council Candidate Forum. And you can clap. (APPLAUSE). Good, get it out of your system because I don't think you're allowed to clap later. My name is Emily France.
I currently serve as the Chair of the North Orange County Legislative Alliance, and I'm a member of the Brea Chamber Board of Directors. The Brea Chamber and the League of Women Voters are hosting this forum so that Brea voters can learn more about each of the candidates running for the three open city council seats in the hopes that Brea voters can make an informed decision on Election Day. We would like to thank Deborah Vots and Jan Wagner of the League of Women Voters, and Heidi Gallegos and Michael Guzman of the Brea Chamber for helping us set this event up. I would now like you all to rise and salute our great flag in this nation. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Brea Chamber of Commerce would like to thank everyone in the audience who has submitted or would like to submit questions for our question and answer portion of the candidate's forum. Our hope is that this format provides a means for a more active and direct citizen engagement between Brea voters and their city government. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to our moderator for the evening, Jan Wagner, and she's going to explain the rules of the forum, and we're going to get started. Thanks so much for being here.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Jan Wagner. I'm co-president of the League of Women Voters of North Orange County, and I'll be your moderator for this evening's forum. The League of Women Voters is a trusted, nonpartisan political organization. Our members do the hands-on work to safeguard democracy while we never endorse a candidate. We are directly involved in shaping the important issues that keep our communities strong. As a League of Women Voters member, I have the opportunity to contribute in a leadership role, such as the one I have now, that has a great impact on local, state, and even national issues. If you are interested in learning more about how you can make a similar impact, I would encourage you to pick up some of the literature available here tonight, or visit our website at l w v n o c dot org. The League of Women Voters, the Brea Chamber of Commerce, and participants in tonight's forum have not authorized any video or audio recordings of this forum other than the repeat television broadcast on Channel 3 Time Warner Cable, which will be shown at 5:30 PM daily until the election. If any recordings are made by any member of the audience, we strongly urge that the forum be recorded in its entirety and not be edited in any way. The FCC requires that videotape of a debate or forum not be edited and must be broadcast in its entirety, either live or reasonably soon after it takes place. Both the FCC and the League want to ensure that information is not manipulated to create a false or misleading impression. Therefore, no candidate is allowed to use or edit footage for campaign purposes. Let us begin. The format for tonight's evening is that we will open with a two-minute opening statement, followed by a question period where the candidates will have one minute each to answer questions from the audience. Other candidates may also answer questions, but they do not have to do so. So as you pose your questions, you may indicate on the top of your question card that you wish it to go to a particular candidate, to all candidates, or simply put your question on a card. Then we will end with closing statements in reverse order from the opening statements. The candidates will speak in an order that was determined by lot that was drawn before we started this evening's forum. We are aided this evening by timekeepers Marion Shane and Carol Biddle, who are over here, by question sorters Wanda Schaefer, Anita Larson, and Jody Balma, who are next to me over here. You will see them talking quietly to each other. You will see them writing and shuffling cards. They are not creating questions, but they are combining duplicate questions, possibly trying to make questions more clear, although that is kept to a minimum. Questions will be screened out that are personal attacks. That means, "When did you last kick your dog?" That does not mean pointed questions about an incumbents' record, or pointed questions about something that has been stated by any candidate in their literature or during the campaign. Those are fair game. They will also screen out questions that do not pertain to the city office that is being sought. So questions that have to do with national issues, for example, will not go forward. We also are assisted by two students from Cal State Fullerton, Claire Kim and Nick Jakel, and we appreciate their being here this evening. As we go through the evening and you think of questions, just raise your hand, and the people will pick them up and put them forward. We will be asking questions in the order that they come in, and I know that if it's like we usually have it, we will not get to every question, but we will do our best. To help with that, we do ask that you hold your applause until the end, when we will recognize all of the candidates. So, we will begin. Oh, before I start, the candidates have been asked to turn off all cell phones. The audience is asked to at least silence your cell phones, or any electronic devices, please. So, the first to give our opening statement this evening is Mr. Vargas. Mr. Vargas, please.
Thank you, Jan. Well, I'm very pleased to be here, and thank you all for being here as well. This is a great opportunity, a great opportunity for us to help heal this city, and I'm just pleased to be in this position, to be in this opportunity, have this opportunity. A little bit about me, I went on active duty in 2003 as a naval reservist, and between deployments, I've immersed myself in helping this city, and helped them to shape this city. And that's behind the scenes, doing what I could do, and that meant that I ran for city council more than once. But I do that because I believe that my efforts have helped to shape public policy in this city. And you can see that, and you could tell that, because every issue that's coming up and all these pieces that you're getting in the mail, what are they talking about? They're talking about transparency, and open governance, and pension reform. These are items that for 10 years I've been focusing on, and I've been pushing forward. So I'm very proud of you as voters for helping me push those issues forward and helping the council to recognize that their importance. Over the decade, politicians have been promising us a more transparent government, but we have yet to see it. It's now time that we could reclaim and get back on track and work as a team, and kind of bury all of this negative attitude that's been happening here lately, and show our kids that we have a council we can be proud of, that we're not bullies, that we can all work together and help make a better Brea. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Parker, I'm sorry, Mr. Parker.
Good evening. My wife, Mary Jo, and I are 33-year Brea residents. And Brea is a wonderful city, and I've been proud to serve both as a mayor and councilman from 1990 through 98, and as your elected city treasurer since 2004. But the current discord and lack of respectful conversation between council members, oh, I'm sorry. I had it on, and I turned it off, and with the community, has led me to believe that we need a change of leadership on the council. As retiring Councilman Moore stated in his Brea Net Newsletter, "The council has become dysfunctional." He described an atmosphere where some council members don't talk to each other, and personal alliances lead to punishing members that don't agree. Well, having been married for 42 years, I can tell you, I wouldn't still be married if I didn't talk to my wife. Just like a successful marriage, it takes communication and hard work to develop the working relationships necessary to solve problems in a collaborative manner. Council members must vigorously debate an issue, agree to agree or disagree, take the vote, and then move on to start anew on the next issue. It's my hope that my prior council experience, plus my business management experience, as well as my current position as a city fire inspector, gives me the skills to help improve council debate and identify consensus-based solutions that better match your community values. As your council member, I commit to conservatively manage our fiscal resources, manage strong police and fire services, develop a comprehensive compensation program to ensure we're being fiscally prudent in dealing with our pension liabilities, protect and preserve our natural resources, including hillsides and water, respectful, innovative, problem-solving, and independent decision-making, a long overdue city strategic plan led by the community to reflect your vision for Brea's future, and finally, and most importantly, a commitment to make community engagement a part of the city administration culture without understanding of your values and priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harris.
Good evening. I'd like to first thank the League of Women Voters for their organizing this and putting this together. Something like this takes a lot of organization, so a thank you to Jan and the League. I'd also very much like to thank all of the people who came here. This is, for me, such a confirmation and a reaffirmation of my faith in the community, and my faith in our country, and our constitution. I'm not a politician. If you're looking for slick speeches, and I speak from the heart, I talk like you people do. I just talk to you, tell me what's on your mind, tell me what's on your heart, I'll tell you what's on mine. I'm, by training and background, I'm an environmental engineer. I'm a little bit anal about data and research and facts. I don't like assuming positions because of consensus or because it's popular. I like chasing the facts and let them lead where they will, and let them determine what the best outcome is, taken together with the input from the community. The only reason I decided to run was because I'm concerned about our country in general. I've traveled around the state, I've traveled around the country. There's a lot of things going on that are influencing our community right here, and each of you individually. It's very disturbing, but you need to begin somewhere, and that best place is here with folks like you, and people who care about their community, their neighbors, their neighborhoods. Most of you may remember me, the most recent thing in the city is I developed the improvements in the new Brea Plaza Shopping Center where Lucille's is. So, I know, and I worked with the city, I know what doesn't work. I, as an entrepreneur and businessman, that's been around a few years, I know how to make it work better, and I'm asking you to give me a chance to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hupp.
Thank you all for coming here tonight. I've been a resident of Brea for 26 years. Our children went to school here. This is a community that's been very good to us. I've also owned a business here in Brea for over 31 years, work side-by-side with my husband every day, which tells you that I have the ability to not only communicate, but get along well with others. I've watched our council change a lot over the last few years, and it disturbs me that we seem to have a 3-2 vote on everything that goes on in our city, and I think it's time that that changed. I think we need a council that can respect each other, work together with the best interest of the community at heart, and I think we need a council that welcomes community input and encourages it, not only on a day-to-day basis, but for future planning. It's important that we all work together to keep this community a good community for all of us, and that includes working with our local businesses to make sure that they can thrive in this community as well. We owe a lot to them as well. So, I've been told I'm a woman of few words, I prefer to listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kim.
Yes, thank you so much for coming tonight. I've never had so many people come to see me. This is my first time running for council. However, I have worked with the city as a consultant for 35 years, and I have served as a Public Works Director, city engineer, and also as an interim community development director, and been on traffic commissions, so I am pretty much familiar with city operations and took part in every, in all the major decision-making meetings with every different cities that I have served. But of them all, I loved city of Brea the most. I lived here for 30 years. My kids were grown and raised here, and I have served the city of Brea as an engineering consultant since 2005, so you could blame me for some of the potholes in the street. But right now, we are facing a lot of critical issues, even though Brea is a wonderful and great place to live and to work. And Brea citizens have always chosen to make the right decisions, no matter what the challenges are, and I look forward to working with Brea and to bring forth my expertise and my experience to make sure that we move on to a brighter future for Brea. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Murdock.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I want you all to know that Brea is an incredible, incredible city. We're a leader in the industry. Our reputation around the county, around the state, even around the nation, is that we are one of the best cities to live in. But why? How did we get here? What got us there? I believe it's been vision and bold thinking that has gotten us here. The Brea Mall, the Civic and Cultural Center, the Brea Downtown, the Brea Community Center, the sports park, the solar project that's on this very building. And even in just in the last four years, we dedicated the War Memorial, Wildcat's Park, the Dog Park, a brand-new fire station, Fire Station 4 in Carbon Canyon. And in the last four years, we even were one of the first cities in Orange County to initiate a two-tier pension system, to really head-on the pension situation that's going on in the state. And all the while, even in the Great Recession, we've delivered a balanced budget every single year. I've grown up my whole life here in Brea. I graduated from Brea schools, I even got my Eagle Scout here in Brea. My wife was born in Brea, we're raising our two-year-old son in Brea, my law practice is here in Brea. I'm even a member of the Brea Rotary Club. Brea, Brea, Brea. This election is about Brea, and I want you to know how much I love this city, and I'm dedicated and committed to keeping Brea on the forefront of outstanding living, with the continued visionary and bold thinking that has put Brea on the map as one of the greatest cities to live in. Thank you all for coming this evening. I appreciate it.
Thank you. This brings us to the question portion of our evening, and as stated earlier, we'll ask questions in rotation order. The first question will be posed to Mr. Parker. Mr. Parker, Brea's unfunded pension liability is a concern. How would you address this problem?
Well, first, I think when we do that, we need to understand what the number is that we're trying to tackle. There have been people that have talked about $200 million, and in fact, that's not the real number. We're going to be required next year to show on the balance sheet what that actual number is, and it'll be $54 million, and that's certainly not a small number, but it's much less than what some have been bandying about. There have already been some adjustments made. Those adjustments have made some single digits improvement in the funding percentage, but there's a lot more to be done, and that's going to include additional employee contributions, as well as having a multi-year forecasting model, so we can actually see the impact of those changes that we might make before we make them, changing retirement ages, bringing new employees on with different benefit programs. So, there are many things that can be done, but we need to have, which we do not have now, a multi-year forecasting model that shows us what that liability would be in each year as we make adjustments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Alex.
Mr. Vargas?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, and as our treasurer, you would be the one I would rely upon to have those numbers, so I appreciate that. The numbers that are being bandied about are also medical liability, which is another $20 million. As many of you might know, I, in 1999, was on this council. I was on from 98 to 2002, and we had a discussion, and they said that they were going to spike our pensions here in Brea for a police and fire, and it was 3% at 50. We had a great debate about that, and unfortunately, I lost that debate on a three, four-to-one vote. The bottom line is that we can make changes, but at the same time, we're making changes on the council. On Tuesday night, you're going to hear from the city, the city council, that SB 1251 was passed at the legislature, was just enrolled just on the 29th of September, which exempted all new employees for 180 days after the vote that occurred.
Thank you, Mr. Vargas.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Harris.
Thank you. I, one of the concerns I have, of course, I don't have the advantage of having worked within the city, and certainly with the accountants and the, all the accounting and fiscal reporting as Mr. Parker has, but I know one of the, as, in the 1980s, I worked at First Meridian Financial Group in Newport Beach as a financial planner for closely-held businesses, and we did a lot of retirement planning and forecasting. And one of the things that you try to do is you try to look at your projections for the earnings within your portfolio. And I know that the number that I've seen that's pretty reliable is 70 million of unfunded liability. It's gone as high as 90, I think, is a realistic range. The fact that you have to report it on the balance sheet at 54 million, I just question as whether that's awfully conveniently close to the 56 million of actual cash that's in the bank in New York. So, I wonder if that's a real number. That's my only concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing none other, oh, okay, Mr. Murdock.
You know, I see our pension liability as the number-one issue facing our city. It's something that we've really, really got to work on. It's something that I've been really focused on in the last four years. And one of the things I learned in the first year of being on the council is that the state has confined us to a certain box to play in, and what we can do to help with the situation. The per system, the state system, is where the city is a part of that system. But when you start looking deeper into the box that you can play in, the box where you can make reform, there are some exciting things that we have done with the two-tier pension system, and some even more interesting things that we can do in the future, especially relating to health care for our retirees. So there's still, even within the confines of the law, there's some exciting things we can do to get a handle on this pension system. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will be posed to Mr. Harris. Mr. Harris, how would you improve Brea's transparency in financial issues?
I'm glad I got this question. I have been very concerned, because when I attend city council meetings and there's debate on issues, and some of them, for example, oh, the demonstration garden. Anyone who speaks in favor of it tends to be very small groups. These are very controversial issues, typically ones that the community at large does not support, and what I notice is often left out of the equation is all the people who aren't here. If someone has a burning desire to see something done in the city, they, then, they will come out to support it, but if the community at large does not support it, then it doesn't necessarily mean that we have to pass it right then because three or four people stood up and got very passionate about it. I want to engage more of the community through social networking and have an engagement at the website where people can, don't necessarily need to show up here, but they need to, they can go in and they can put their opinions in a statement, in a comment box. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parker.
One of the things that can be done to improve transparency in all decisions, not just financial, is to have the council do a better job on the televised portion of the meeting, to explain exactly what the issues are and why they're making the decision they are. All too often, you have a little bit of discussion, and then you have a motion, you have a vote, and that's it. I would propose that prior to council meetings, that a council preview be recorded that explains what the agenda item is, what the fiscal impact of that is, and then when we come down to the council floor, all the questions that were asked in study sessions and in committees, that those be unearthed during the meeting by asking staff those same questions, even though we know the answers, so that you know those answers as well, and therefore you understand the basis for the decisions that are made.
Thank you. Mr. Murdock.
Oh, thank you. One of the most exciting, well, there's a lot of exciting things that have happened in the last four years, but one of them is the city of Brea got a new website. I hope you've been to it. It's pretty outstanding. And on that website, we have uploaded every single document that this city operates under on that website, and you can find it when it comes to finding out anything financially. The other thing I wanted to point out is, as mayor, I have moved to have more discussions downstairs instead of upstairs in study session, and also moved to have more items off the consent calendar and on as what we call administrative items, so they can be presented and discussed separately. So, those things all together, this city is a transparent city, and our finances are easy to get ahold of and view, and at these council meetings that are televised, you can see full discussions about what we're doing here in the city of Brea. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vargas.
Yes, ma'am. So, my goal is to, is to give the citizens of Brea answers, and, because I live here too, this is my city, as well as it is your city. But I want to know why our water bills keep on going up when we've been saving 20%. I want to know why we're spending $215,000 on a rock garden when, with the urban runoff fee, when that should be maintenance costs. Most of that cost is maintenance cost. That's the transparency that we're talking about here. The city website is great, and I use it quite often. When you're talking about true transparency, what you're talking about there is that lay out the book, open up the book so everybody can see it, and let people make a decision if they want a rock garden, they want a rock garden. They want to spend $215,000, that's fine, right? But be straightforward and transparent with the people. That's what we're after. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will go first to Ms. Hupp, but it is directed to all candidates, so I will ask all of them to answer in turn. How would you have voted regarding the Madrona development? Please come to order.
I would have voted against the Madrona development, primarily because, and don't get me wrong, I'm in real estate. I believe in property rights, but I do not think that property rights should ever trump public safety, and I think one of the biggest issues with Madrona was public safety. So, I would have voted against it.
Thank you. Mr. Kim.
Yes, I'm with Ms. Hupp, that I am for private property rights, but I'm also aware of the private developments contribute a lot to cities' welfare and construction of infrastructure that's much needed. So, in Madrona case, I unfortunately have not followed it very closely, but the project was already approved, and really, it's kind of an esoteric question, but based on the fact that it meets all the requirements, I really can't say, you know, which way I would go, but I concur with the council decision that it was approved.
Thank you. Mr. Murdock.
Yes, this was a very, very tough decision. Mayor Pro Tem Merrick and I put our heart and souls into this decision. Mayor Protem Merrick and I put our heart and souls into this decision, a lot of hours, months and months of research. I think the two of us toured the property five, six, seven times. What I can tell you for sure is that we took the heart, we took to heart the concerns of the community, and listened intently to the public hearings, listened to the concerns of the community, and did our very best to come to a fair and balanced decision. It was one that dealt with the concerns of the community, especially dealing with water conservation, fire safety, and lot sizes, among others, but also respecting the private owner's right to do what they want to do with their property.
Thank you. Mr. Vargas?
Yes, Brea hillsides are deeply appreciated, they, by me and all brands. They provide a sense of tranquility and improve our property values, and I'm committed to protect them. As a matter of fact, in 1999, Beth Perry and I served on a development committee where we were doing these reductions in housing development based on how steep the slopes were, 15%, 20% reductions, 30% reductions. So, the staff recommended we do all these slope densities, and I said, you know what? That'll open us up to lawsuits. So, I put forward, let's do 30% reduction. So, I led the charge to reduce housing development in our hills. That's factual. I'm the only candidate, elected official, or former elected official, who has ever vote, who has never voted for a housing development. Every housing development over the last 20 years has been voted on by council members supported by the same people who should have the most credibility regarding hillside protection.
Thank you. Mr. Parker?
As the only candidate that actually did give public testimony for the, during the Madrona hearings, it's well-known that I would have opposed the project, I would have voted against it, for two principal reasons, public safety and the excessive use of water for their manufactured slopes. Finally, though, as one of the founding board members and current chairman of the Wildlife Corridor Conservation Authority, for the last 20 years, I have been involved in the effort to preserve our hillsides, keeping with the vision of brands that has been expressed over the past 30 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hupp, I'm sorry. Mr. Harris?
Unlike my esteemed counterpart here, Ms. Hupp, I am not a man of few words, and I try to be, and this has been the most difficult part of campaigning these. I thought I had two minutes. I forgot we only have one minute, so I'll cut to the chase. I agree with the council's decision. I agree with the reasons they did it. It reflected the broader desires of the community and not a small, special interest group. I understand the passions of that small interest group, but you can't have a mentality in a city that's trying to grow and prosper that I'm up, pull up the ladder, I got what I want, forget you. And as an environmental engineer, the concerns and claims were way overblown, and I don't like it when you exclude studies that counter what that small group wants you to talk about and look at only, and not listen to the other side. So, I would have approved it as well, and I'm glad to see it going forward. Keep in mind that the, there is only 33% of the available land in the city that's being used, and you don't get prosperity without using your resources of land. 66% of the land in the city is not being used.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next question is for Mr. Kim. Mr. Kim, how do you plan to show respect to your fellow council members during discussions and/or debates? In other words, to allow for facilitation of differing opinions?
Yes, thank you for the question. Basically, I have always worked with teamwork philosophy and problem-solving philosophy. So, I would basically focus only on issues, not personalities, and we want to focus on the issues that benefits the city of Brea. Even during the campaign, I reached out to all the candidates, and I look forward, if I get elected, to work with them very closely and focus on the issues and come to reasonable solutions that will benefit City of Brea.
Thank you. Mr. Parker?
I think that one of the things that's very important in the debate is that you don't just listen to each other and hear the words, but you actually try to understand why the person has those views and what the goal is that they think needs to be achieved. Too often, we disagree not knowing the facts as to why we're disagreeing. So, we need to make sure that we do that, and to make sure that when a council member has a request for additional time, a request for additional information, that we help that, we ask staff to accommodate that and make sure that they have all the information they need, so that at the time that we come to make a decision, hopefully, we're all at the same point in time, we all have had the questions answered, we need it answered, and we have all the information we need to make a final decision at that point in time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harris?
Thank you. I think one of the things that's very important in five people voting on an issue that pertains to what's best for the city of Brea and the residents of the city of Brea, is that they have 100% of their agenda and their attention focused on what's best for Brea, nothing outside of Brea. The mayor, for example, is the chair of the Orange County Council of Governments. He's the regional council member for the Southern California Association of Governments, and he's president of the Orange County Division of the League of California Cities. If you read those groups' vision statements and their agendas, they are not, they are, they supersede your rights and your interests. And if that's not the case, I would ask the mayor to post the transcripts of all the meetings at the Brea website, so that all of us can see what he talks about and what they discuss there that's in the best interest of the city of Brea. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hupp?
I think that it's essential that the first thing you have, when you have five members on a council, is that, number one, the egos get checked at the door, and you have respect for each other, because you have to remember that if you disrespect your fellow council members, you are disrespecting the people that voted that person in. So, we can't all agree on everything. We have to agree to disagree and move forward, and I think that's essential.
Thank you. Mr. Vargas?
I'd just like to add that it's okay to disagree. Sorry. I was just saying, it's okay to disagree, but it's not okay to be disagreeable. That's all we're asking everybody to do.
Thank you. Our next question is for Mr. Murdock. Mr. Murdock, this question came directly to you. Four years ago, you promised if elected, you would be a consensus builder. What grade would you give yourself on achieving this promise?
You know, this is a, this is a very interesting theme that's been going on the last year or so, even longer. When I was elected mayor in 2013, I made a pact with myself to reach out to all of the five council members and make sure that they felt included. In my State of the City address, I included each council member to have an opportunity to do a video and speak to everyone. When I walked through the hallways of City Hall, I greet and say hello to all my council members, to no avail, to some of them. No response from some of them. I can only keep trying and trying and trying to reach out, trying and trying and trying to make that bridge and bridge that gap, but when my hand isn't received on the other end, it's just not there. So, I have worked very hard and put this issue in the forefront of being mayor of the city.
Thank you. Mr. Vargas?
Jan, you asked for a grade, and I'm not going to give a grade to Mr. Murdock. I would give the entire city council an F, however. It's embarrassing, right? It's embarrassing to watch, and it's not something that we want our children. I have, I have five daughters, a lot of people know it, but I also have five grandkids, and I'm teaching them, well, they're actually too small, but I'm teaching my girls, and I have taught my girls, that it's not okay to be a bully, and that's the message we got to get out. We can't have our kids seeing this infighting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parker?
I think it's very interesting, the comments Mr. Murdock made about he keeps trying, and yet, during the senior center forum, he expressed basically a satisfaction with a 5-2 council. He said, well, at least with three people voting, we've been moving the agenda forward, and look at all the wonderful things that we've accomplished. Well, you know, the fact is that I think that that effort has stopped. They haven't been working together, and I guess, Steve, you and I don't always agree, but we agree on this, but I don't know that I can give them a grade. I think I'd give them an incomplete, because they, because they actually haven't done all the work to even earn a grade.
Audience, please. Thank you. Mr. Harris?
I pass. I was just going to agree with Mr. Vargas. I didn't hear a grade.
Thank you. Our next question will go, I'm sorry, did she wish to speak, Ms. Hupp?
Okay, I'm a show-me type of person, and I've been going to the study sessions and the council meetings, because I don't want to listen to rumor, I want to see it for myself. And I witnessed something at a study session that I found highly disturbing. When Councilman Simonoff asked to have a discussion placed on the agenda for the community facilities districts, and he said, I have been asking repeatedly to have this on the agenda, when are we going to discuss it? And our mayor's answer was, thank you for your comments. When Mr. Simonoff countered with, it wasn't a comment, it was a question, he was told, I'm going to take that as a comment. That's disrespectful, and we don't have room for that in our city.
Excuse me, no. The audience will be in order. Thank you. Our next question is for Mr. Vargas, and it is directed to Mr. Vargas. Mr. Vargas, you have been involved in lawsuits against the city costing tens of thousands of dollars in legal fees. Can you, can you explain that against your claim to be fiscally conservative?
Yes, and I have two minutes for this, right?
No, you have one.
Well, good. I anticipated this, so, yes, it is unfortunate that a citizen who loves his city is pushed to a point where he has to actually file a lawsuit. It wasn't a lawsuit filed initially, it was a request to cure an issue that happened with the city clerk. And the city clerk, first of all, Sheriff Balls is outstanding, she's done a great job. It was a simple error, because she was getting bad legal advice, right? And it's just like, I'll give you an example. If the initiatives were reviewed, and it was a $10 million bond, and then the city clerk put forward, and then said, oh, we meant the $100 million bond, and that's what the voter saw, that would be wrong, wouldn't it? That's the issue that I fought for, is to make sure that there can't make any changes once it's been reviewed. There's an opportunity to cure that, and that opportunity was passed on two occasions. So, it's unfortunate that, like me and the city of San Juan Capistrano, occasion that you have to sue. Thank you.
Our next question is for Mr. Parker, and it is directed directly to Mr. Parker. Since you have been the city treasurer for 10 years, why haven't we heard anything from you regarding the issues that have to do with excess compensation, Korea Gate, measures T and A?
Well, I think the first place to start with that is to understand the city treasurer's responsibility under government code. City treasurer is responsible for overseeing the investment portfolio for the city. City treasurer is not the finance director of the city, so as a result, does not weigh in on the city council's decisions, does not pass judgment on them. Certainly, I have my personal opinion about many things they have done, and that's one of the reasons that I'm running, because I think they have not been conservative in the things that they have done. I would not have supported, and I do not support, spending taxpayers' money on foreign travel. I think that's just ridiculous. In the past, council members for decades have paid for that out of their own pocket, and so, that's just one issue that I've identified, that I've got a very strong feeling about, and I would take a very strong conservative approach to our fiscal matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Vargas?
I just, also on the agenda, we're going to have a presentation regarding the city's treasury. It's currently got $56 million in it that is part of the portfolio that you oversee. So, my point is, is that the rate of return for the one year is 1%. It's 0.99% is what we're getting, 1%. And over the last three years, it's 1.15%. So, I am, I have a little bit of money set aside, and I'm getting 2.5%, and that's on just the money market, so just a short-term, three-year money market, 2.5%. So, I think we could do better on that, on that front. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harris?
The actual numbers, when you look at it, we all know there was a recession that hit us all in 2007, which was right when we were ready to pull permits on our shopping center redevelopment. It took a lot of creative thinking to work our way through that. But Mr. Vargas's numbers are absolutely correct, and we've had this sustained downward trend. In 1996, our portfolio earnings was a little over 4%. 10 years ago, it was 3.65%. And this year, we're down, as he says, at 1%. For the last three months, we're in the hole, we're going backwards. So, over that roughly 14-year period or so, with that sustained downward trend, you'd think there'd be some more urgency about really taking a red pen to the line items in the budget and starting to pare back on the city's expenses, starting with the bloated salaries of a lot of the staff.
Thank you. Our next question is for Mr. Harris. Mr. Harris, the concept of local fracking has become an area of interest for brands. What is the city of Brea's role in regulating this practice?
Again, I'll remind everyone, my background is environmental engineer. I attended the recent forum at the Cal State University, Fullerton, and it was very informative, had quite a bit of the same information I already was aware of and knew of, going back all the way to, as I said, I was a financial advisor at First Meridian Financial Group, and we looked at and managed portfolios, a lot of which was invested in oil and gas, and I had to always look for what was wrong, because we were in the business of managing and finding risk and making sure people didn't get hurt in that risk. And when it comes to fracking, to my knowledge, there's no fracking going on in the city limits anywhere. I'm not sure why it's always an issue, except that maybe it's one of those gotcha things. If I, all I want to know is, we have a rich tradition of oil production here, that's a resource, that's income, that's good, that promotes prosperity. I just want to know if there's a way we can make money off of anything. That's what I want to know for the city of Brea, how do we monetize things, as long as it's safe, of course?
Thank you. Ms. Hupp?
I personally feel we don't have enough information on fracking. There are a number of citizens in our community that are concerned about it. It deals with our future, and I think that we need to be concerned, and we need to do everything we can to find out everything about it, to determine whether or not it's safe.
Thank you. Mr. Parker?
Yeah, I think that the city's responsibility in the matter is still unknown, because we still have a lot of information that we need to gather. We also need to hear the opposing point of view, which we haven't heard yet. We've heard the oil company's point of view on that, and they've given us a lot of information. The symposium certainly was very helpful, and I learned a lot more about the issue. But we have a lot more to learn. I think the residents' community have a right to learn that, and I think we also have a right to let the people in this community hear the opposing point of view on that, so we see a balanced presentation on the issue before we move any forward and make any decisions.
Thank you. Mr. Murdock?
You know, this issue has been something of great interest to me. It was an issue that the people of the city of Brea brought to the city council, and I just love that. It was, it was an issue that you guys brought to us, and I know for sure, the mayor Protem and I, Mayor Protem and I, took it very seriously and started to research and, and ask our staff to, hey, we need all hands on deck to kind of figure out what's going on with this issue. We found out that it's heavily regulated by the state and federal governments, but I got to say, I have a son who might go to a Lynda Elementary School, and I'll tell you what, if this is dangerous for this community, if this really, the science shows that fracking is dangerous for our community, I'm absolutely is dangerous for our community, I'm absolutely going to be taking steps to stop it.
Thank you. Our next question is for Ms. Hupp. And this question came addressed to Ms. Hupp and Mr. Parker, so I'm going to, after Ms. Hupp, I'm going to call on Mr. Parker. Since you say you want to build consensus, have you reached out and talked to all the current council members?
Yes, over the last year, I've talked to everyone. I've gone to all the council meetings and witnessed what's gone on. I don't think there's anyone on this panel that I don't have the ability to work with. I may not always agree with them, and I most certainly would not put up with abuse of another council member. I'm pretty outspoken about that, so I don't think I'd have a problem working with anyone that's sitting at this table.
Thank you. Mr. Parker.
Absolutely. In the past, actually, two years, I've talked to all council members. The amount of time I've spent with them is varied according to the interests that they've shown to want to sit down and talk, but I think it's important, again, as I had mentioned earlier, that if you don't talk and you don't understand each other's points of view, there's no way you're going to refine common ground and find some consensus-based solutions.
Thank you. Our next question is for Mr. Kim, but it is addressed to all candidates, so I'm going to ask you all to answer in turn. Mr. Kim, what is your opinion of the two-tiered water rate structure? And secondarily, is the city doing enough to conserve water?
The city's tiered water charge structure was basically conceived to encourage water conservation. So as users use more water, their rates go up. However, as you know, that there is a lawsuit that went on in the city of San Juan Capistrano, that it is in violation of Proposition 218, that users should only be charged for the cost of delivery of the water. However, the city is also mandated to conserve 20 percent of the water usage by 2020. So, you know, we do have to work toward conservation of water usage. So basically, I think that we need to look very closely to make sure that we are not in violation of Proposition 218 at the same time.
Thank you. Mr. Murdock.
Thank you. You know, as I've said, I think the number one, most important issue facing our city is getting a handle on our pension liability, but the close second is water. I'm really worried about it. However, just this year, the council voted unanimously to purchase a substantial amount of water rights in the San Gabriel Basin, okay? And what this does is this guarantees the residents of Braja access to inexpensive but high-quality water forever, okay? It's a very important thing that the city council did regarding our water issue. That said, Braja's situation, I believe, isn't much better than other cities, but we still need to do our share. And you all know that there are several incentives that Braja residents can take advantage of to take out their high-water usage landscape and replace it with drought-tolerant plants.
Thank you. Mr. Vargas.
Yes, the San Juan Capistrano lawsuit I mentioned earlier, that's an unfortunate situation where citizens have to sue their own city council regarding, and they did that regarding tiered water rates. And well, that has been a watershed of inspiration. Do you like that? I actually wrote that down. For others to question the fairness of government using ordinances to regulate behaviors. The purpose of government is to use our collective buying power to lower the cost of service, not to earn a profit on the ratepayers above the cost of service. And the fact that we bought Cal domestic water shares, which is a great benefit, but now we're paying the city of Braja for that, for that water. So the city of Braja is earning the money off of our water use. You cannot tax people into behavior modifications. It's just not the way we do business. It's not the way, it's not the American way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parker.
I think that water rates need to be fair and equitable. I think they need to ensure lifeline availability to all regardless of income. And due to the very fact that water will continue to be a scarce commodity, there needs to be some way to try to encourage conservation. We're going to find out when we hear the San Juan Capistrano case, once it gets out of the courts, it's going to define for us how that fair and equitable is, and we're going to have to live within those rules and use that with our water rates. I think it's interesting that Mr. Murdock, though, mentions buying all the water, which we've been doing for many years. It's interesting that one of the more than $2 million purchases that the council approved after the fact, after staff went out and bought that water and spent the money without the council having approved it in advance. So it took some, we now have controls in place, so that can't happen again, but that's the kind of control we've had in city council, towards staff feels they have the liberty to go out and spend more than $2 million of our money without council approval.
Thank you. Mr. Harris.
Yeah, actually, again, my background's environmental engineer, one of my areas of specialty is hydrology. My family has a long history of farming in the Central Valley. Water issues have always been something that have been at the forefront. And I'll tell you this, and I'll say this flat out, I'm against any kind of socialist schemes. Nobody liked carb, nobody liked cap and trade, where you, you take money from people who are producers and are successful or are pro-growth and actually producing wealth and jobs, and then transferring and making, and penalizing them and making them pay for other people. And I think that's what two-tiered water essentially does. There is a, there is a real cost to delivering water. We ought to do an audit and find out what that is, and we ought to just be paying for that cost of delivering the water. And that's what the city should be doing for the residents, as I agree completely with Mr. Vargas. It should be a collective bargaining thing, and I'd like to know what we paid for that San Gabriel water.
Thank you. Ms. Hupp.
I'm opposed to tiered water rates. I think that it penalizes those who have a greater need, and that's not, not the right thing to do. I think we need to find a way to reward those who are able to save. Do I think the city's doing enough to conserve? No, I don't. I mean, I was driving to work the other day and we were watering Berry. We were out walking the other day and there was a fire hydrant leaking water because the street sweeper had filled up his tank and not tightened it all the way. There's ways we can conserve. I don't think that the demonstration garden is a good use of our funds to show us how to conserve water.
Thank you. Our next question is for Mr. Murdock, and it is directed to Mr. Murdock. At another forum, you spoke about representing Braja on regional boards. Please explain how this is a positive for Braja residents. For example, you voted to raise sewer rates as our representative on the Orange County sanitation board despite residents' objections.
Look, everyone, this is a small city, and a lot of the issues that face our city don't come from within our borders. Regional transportation planning, regional sewer. I'm also the president of the Orange County League. And one of the biggest things that I work for, for you, for the city of Braja, representing you outside of Braja, is to maintain local control here in the city of Braja, because government closest to the people governs best. So the opposite would be to just take our heads and bury them in the sand and not consider about the things that are happening outside our borders and how they're influencing us. I believe that it's important for us to get outside of Braja and represent, vigorously represent our interests on regional boards, because that, because the impacts of the region impact the city. And trust me, I've been busting my butt for you guys, protecting the city.
Thank you. Mr. Harris.
Thank you. Yeah, I would again, challenge the mayor to make public the transcripts of those meetings, if they'll allow you to. I understand that that's a forbidden. And again, these regional boards are unelected people, they're unaccountable. It almost makes a farce of this democratic process to go through this, to vote for us if some, if you have other people outside the city that we didn't elect are dictating what we have to do within our city. Excellent example is the demonstration garden. That came from regionalism, didn't come from within the city. I didn't see anyone petitioning with signs in front of the mayor's office demanding the demonstration garden. The tracts comes from regionalism. These are things that are impacting and taking away your liberties and your private property rights, and we need to put a stop to it immediately. It's, nine states have outlawed the kind of sustainable development that the mayor and other people within the city are basically drinking the Kool-Aid of. And we got to stop it, folks.
Thank you. Our next question is for Mr. Vargas. Do you live, in fact, it, what it says is, "Do any of you live in the 92823 zip code?" And it goes on, "This has been an underrepresented area. Should the city, therefore, consider district voting instead of at-large voting?" Ah, and now it says it's for all candidates. So it will go to Mr. Vargas first and then onto all the others.
Okay, so thank you. So the, the 92823 is essentially Alinda Ranch and up there in Alinda Village. That's the way, on the east, east end of the, of Braja. So, so no, I do not live in the, in the 92823 area code. I live in the Glenbrook neighborhood, and there's a big sound wall there. It's a 14-foot sound wall. Matter of fact, I have a beautiful sign that I have lit up at night, so you can see my white letters. But as far as the district, no, absolutely not. We have representation and we are a small enough city and we're a tight enough community. And I go around, I go into downtown and I see friends and neighbors that I haven't seen all, you know, for months, I see them in the downtown, because I, I visit the downtown. So no, I don't believe that we need to do these districts, no.
Thank you. Mr. Parker.
I'm not sure if we need to have districts. We certainly haven't had them for many, many years. I think before we explore that as an option, I think what we need to do is get back to public engagement. I have been engaged with the public for many, many years, including the years that I have been on the council. There are many people up in Alinda Village and Hollydale that know me. I've been engaged with them for many, many years, talked to them about their issues and concerns. And I think that's the first thing that your new council needs to do, is renew its commitment to public engagement, to all segments of this community, not only geographically, but all age groups in the community as well. We need to make sure that our seniors are properly represented and that we are properly listening to them and evaluating their needs, making sure that our youth are taken care of and that we're taking care of their needs as well. So it really gets back to, I think that's the very first step. We've abandoned public engagement in this city, we've been afraid of it in this city, and I think we need to get back to it. We need to engage the public so we understand your priorities, your needs, and that guides our decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harris.
I do not live in the 92823. And I love driving through the canyon on occasion. I think it's a nice area and kind of a throwback to the early days of Braja. But again, my passion is, is private property rights, and we all have to respect each other's private property rights. You should be entitled to do just about anything you want to do on your own private property and let other people on their private property do what they want to do, provided the basic and concerns for safety and, and the impacts that something might have on your immediate safety or your quiet enjoyment, as the law refers to it, that those things are protected. And I think, I have never seen a development where that cannot be achieved, and yet development can be done and progress and everybody's, is, benefits from it. Excuse me.
Thank you. Ms. Hupp.
I agree with Stephen Glenn. The question leads me to believe that people who live in the 92823 zip code don't feel that they're properly represented. And that gets back to community engagement and involving the public in the decisions that we make and making sure that we listen to the concerns of every resident in this city, no matter where they live.
Thank you. Mr. Kim.
Yes, I do live in the poor side of 92823. And, and I definitely don't want to be excluded through a district. I think that we should be considered as part of city of Braja and, and have the same representation with any other parts of Braja. And I think that is the way it is right now. I don't believe that any part of the city should be district. I think we should have a comprehensive representation for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Murdock.
Thank you, yeah. This issue is in front of the Anaheim voters in this election, and you know, it may make sense for a city of 300,000, but you know, a small city like Braja, you know, I think, you know, we can all still go into the supermarket and see each other and know each other. We have a, a small-town feel here that is one of the reasons why I love, I love living here. You know, there's this constant bringing up of this idea of community engagement and that the city of Braja doesn't have community engagement. I beg to wholeheartedly differ. The city of Braja takes community engagement very, very seriously, every time we do anything. Like, what are we going to do at the Burch Hills Golf Course involving our community center? We have three or four community engagement meetings. How, what rules should we have at the dog park? We send out emails, we have meetings, we have a, a dog group to let us know what rules we should have at the, at the dog park. The city of Braja takes community engagement seriously.
Thank you. Our next question is for Mr. Parker. During the recent economic recession, the city began looking into ways to partner with other surrounding cities on public safety staffing. Do you support working with other cities? And if so, how do you envision this in the future?
I believe the reality is, is that in order to spend taxpayers' money effectively, to be able to provide the high level of services that Braja residents expect, I think we have to look at all opportunities to make sure that we are, I'm sorry. To be able to spend taxpayers' money effectively, I think we need to be able to look at all potential ways to effectively utilize that money. I think sharing resources with other cities has merit. I think it's very important when we do that, though, that we make sure that we maintain our control over those services. So it's not something that fits for every single type of service that you provide. When the Orange County Fire Authority is proposed to come in and take over the fire service for the city of Braja, I was personally opposed to that for the same reason, that we would have been one of 32 board members. So we, our ability to have influence over the services provided here in the city would have been minimized by that effort.
Thank you. Our next question is for Mr. Harris. Many Orange County cities are moving towards term limits for local municipalities. What is your opinion on imposing, or if not imposing, legislating term limits for Braja City Council?
Well, I'm always in favor of term limits, anywhere, anytime. I, I have a, just a personal disdain for career politicians, people who generally theorize about everything and have very little actual working experience in those, in the areas of which they want to govern others over. And so I would even go further and have certain qualifications, minimum qualifications for someone who runs for office, but having said that, I, I hope I get your vote. I just want to come here and help fix things. There's some very good people up here that I hope you also elect, and I think you all have very good discernment and know who those people are. I plan to only stay here one term, and, and that's it. You can't force me to stay. I have other businesses to run, but I'm very passionate about this, and I think anyone who runs for office, they should say the same thing. I'm only going to be here one term, I'm going to serve you with all my heart, and then I go and I'm going to find, and help you find someone to replace me that's just as passionate and dedicated. Thank you.
Our next question is for Ms. Hupp. Ms. Hupp, given California's economic uncertainty the past few years, there is a school of thought that local cities should maintain healthy reserves. Do you agree or disagree?
Oh, I absolutely agree. As a businessperson, that's what's kept us open for 31 years. You know, when times are good, you need to plan for the future. Just because the money's in your coffers does not mean you spend it. It means you plan for the worst-case scenario so that you have a cushion to fall back on. And when cuts have to be made when times are tough, those cuts need to start at the top, not at the bottom. Case in point, when our business is good, we bank the money. We're very careful with how we spend it. And when it's bad, we're the first ones that take the pay cuts, because the people that work for us are the cog that keeps that wheel turning, and we have to keep their jobs there.
Thank you. Mr. Parker.
I absolutely agree. Reserves are essential to the security of this community, and the city has had a long history of having substantial reserves for exactly that purpose. But talking about balanced budgets, Mr. Murdock made the comment that they balanced every single budget. Well, I guess that's true. If you account for the fact that, you don't account for the fact that you're taking money in essentially out of reserves to balance it some years, because there were a couple of years where they actually deferred the amount of money that was going into reserves, they cut the amount going into reserves so that they could balance the budget. So to me, that's not the way you balance a budget, and it's also not the way that you make sure your reserves are adequate. Our major fixed asset reserve program is only 60% funded for the amount of money that it should have at this point in time. That's not adequate reserves.
Thank you. Mr. Murdock.
You may want to ask yourselves the level of intent that Mr. Parker has in reaching out to the other side or reaching out to his colleagues when he continues to attack me. But I do want to say one thing that's really important. You guys, a lot of you got a piece that said, "Brea's finances are on the rocks," okay? That is absolutely not the case. During the Great Recession, we did two things. One, we went through some serious, serious financial and staffing cuts to make sure our budget was balanced. And furthermore, during the Great Recession, we put more money into our reserves, something that no other city in Orange County was able to do. So when it comes to money, we on the council, we have a history, we have a tradition, we have a vision for fiscal conservativeness here.
Our next question is for Mr. Kim. Instead of approving the $215,000 garden, as council majority recently did, would you have voted to postpone the vote to consider the public's position on this use of taxpayer
The demonstration garden that was approved by the council, I have to say that I don't have enough depth of knowledge about the subject to say that whether it would have been good or bad. But I think what should have been done was that there should have been an adequate explanation of why having the demonstration garden is the best way to inform the public and educate the public on conserving water. Or also, the benefits of it should have been a little bit more discussed as to how much water we'll be saving as a result of this education process, and what would be the benefit in the long run. So I think that there was not enough discussion and detailed explanation that was made to the public for the garden.
Thank you. Mr. Parker.
Absolutely. There was absolutely no legal reason, no financial reason, no compelling reason not to have delayed that vote until there's an opportunity to gain more public input. The public had just seen on the agenda, they contacted some of their council members. That's what prompted Councilmember Semenov to ask for that. I think the courtesy should have been given to him for that simple request, to delay it for two weeks for a month, allow the public to provide comment, to ask questions before that that decision went forward. Whether you agree with the concept, whether you agree with doing it or not, the process is critical, and that's public engagement. So for a council that thinks they're engaged with the public, it sounded to me like they were afraid to hear what the public had to say. And since then, we've heard from a lot of people in the public with a lot of great ideas for how that project could move forward without spending that much money and still achieve the same goals.
Thank you. Mr. Harris.
I was also here that night, and I was shocked to see that, the way that turned out. It was as if it was very carefully planned ahead of time by three people, which, to me, has no place in civic government where we're representing you. So, yes, it should have been held over for more discussion and more community input. I go back to the fact that I have not met anyone in Brea who just could not sleep at night because they needed a demonstration garden for $215,000. I mean, I don't know, but again, this again is that regionalism and the loss of local control. Your properties, your liberties, your community, the demonstration garden came from outside of the city. And it's also a fact that this city is becoming increasingly hooked on grant money. It's like a drug. And that is the low-hanging fruit. That's the easy way out. We need to find more creative ways to generate revenue for the city, rather than just grabbing the Trojan horse of grant money, which is stacked and laden with restrictions on your liberties and property rights.
Thank you. Ms. Hupp.
That evening was a blatant example of not listening to public input. That should have been tabled. After all, grant money, that's our tax dollars. The urban runoff fee, we pay that every month. As a business owner, I pay twice as much for the urban runoff fee. I only have two toilets and three sinks, and I pay twice as much. So, yes, the community should have had the opportunity to give their input, to bring some common sense to this council. That is the most ridiculous garden I've ever heard of. Who is going to come and see that?
Thank you. Mr. Vargas.
Okay, so I have down here written, absolutely, if nothing else, to be respectful to the other council members. But I'd like to take my extra 50 seconds and address business. This is a chamber forum. So what would I do to attract new business to Brea? I'm going to tell you. Brea is the economic engine of North Orange County. We have a great retail base, but more importantly, a greater industrial base, which is thriving. We need to continue our positive outreach, which the city has been successful in supporting, but we need, we could do more to support small businesses, and home-based businesses are another strength, and that we could support those to ensure economic success. We have too much regulation and unnecessary fees and intrusive inspections that have dampened the effects on the motivation to start and to begin some of these small startups. If we do not fear civic innovation, we as a local government could become the incubators of this additional source of small business revenue.
Thank you.
Thank you for granting me that.
This will be our last question for the evening, and it will go to Mr. Murdock first, but we'll ask it of all candidates, and Mr. Vargas was a bit prescient. What are your opinions on residential and business growth for Brea, and how does it lead to your overall vision for our city?
Business is the backbone of this city. A healthy, vibrant business economy is essential to having a healthy, vibrant government. You know, you've heard that Brea has an interesting statistic to be proud of. It has the highest percentage of people that are born in the City of Brea that choose to stay here and raise a family in Brea. And a lot of that has to do with sound residential planning. You live in Brea, there are apartments and homes for you to live in that you can afford, and if you are successful and you make it big, there are beautiful, expensive homes that you can live in. There's a place for everyone in here in Brea. In fact, we even really prioritize our focus on senior living as well. And so the residential planning that has occurred in this city is outstanding, and I think it's attributed by the high percentage of the people that live here choose and can and are able and capable of staying here.
Thank you. Mr. Vargas.
Yes, so Brett mentioned sound planning, and we have some excellent planners and engineers at this city, and I have great respect for them. But one of the things that we're having problems with is, I'll give you an example, there are downtown, where we have a parking deficiency. So as you know, or may not know, I know it, but in 1999, we were supposed to build a parking structure behind the Tower Records Building. And the council at the time and the designers decided to do away with that, and we built this other parking structure, number two, way off on the west end. Well, it's scary to go down there. You go down there four levels, a mom doesn't want to go down there with her kids. So we absolutely need that parking structure, number three, behind the Tower Records. That would be an example of sound planning that we really need in this town as far as parking goes. We're just jammed up down there, and we need to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parker.
Well, I think the point about the downtown is a very good example with regards to the parking garage. In the last few months, I've talked to various residents, some that live down there, some business owners that are down there, and I'm continuing to do my homework to talk to more of them about that. Intuitively, I agree. It appears that there may be a need for a parking garage down there. When I parked behind the Tower Records store, when Tower Records was there and Radio Shack was active, it was hard to find a parking spot. So I think it's something that we do need to analyze. We need to decide if it's something that needs to be done, and then figure out how that economically could be achieved. I think, though, in general, though, that points out a real good issue, and that is, we need to engage the citizens, but we need to engage the business community as well. Quite often, we reach out and we talk to them individually, but I think we need to bring them together as a group as well. And I think we also have a resource with Cal State Fullerton to bring in their business department and to give us some of their ideas and stuff as to what things we can do in our community to improve our economic growth.
Thank you. Mr. Harris.
We talk about engaging the community, and I think sometimes we forget a sector of the community, which are the business owners that contribute so much to the revenues for the city. And I was, I have been perusing the fiscal year-end report for the city, which I presume everyone on council has read. And one of the things that startled me was, over the last 10 years, we have lost more than half of the employees in the city from these companies. In 2003, we had 13,345 employees. At fiscal year-end, we had 7,700. We lost Hart Hanks Capital Group, RSKO Company. And I think, I agree with Mr. Parker, we need to engage the business community, not necessarily the professors from Cal State Fullerton, but people, again, who are in the real world and have real-world issues. They should be here. I would have round tables with them, and we would help understand what it is we can do with them. I'll tell you another anecdote later about us attracting all the tenants to Brea Plaza.
Thank you. Ms. Hupp.
Sales tax revenue has been essential to our economy here in Brea, and we need to continue to grow that. By not building the parking garage that we committed to many years ago in the downtown area, we've lost hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars of sales tax revenue, not to mention we have a blighted corner, and that needs to be taken care of. But we have other issues here as well. We have community facilities districts, which is a tax. It's an end game around Prop 13. It's being put on our businesses and our new developments with no end in sight. How can we expect our children to be able to buy homes in our community when we tax them out of the community? So we need to work with our businesses, and we need to work with the developers and the residents of the community to make sure that we do make ourselves business-friendly and community-friendly.
Thank you. Mr. Kim.
Yes, I agree that vibrant business economy needs to be encouraged, and Brea has a very strong economic base. Unfortunately, 40% of the income of Brea is coming from retail business. So we do need to aggressively look at other sources of income from manufacturing services and so forth, so that we have a variety of revenue sources to look at. Far as the downtown business is concerned, I agree that we need to do everything we can to bring vibrance down there, but we do need to look at it very closely, what the cost is and how we're going to service the debt for the cost of parking structure, as we no longer have redevelopment agency tax increment money.
Thank you. We have now closed the section of our evening that is our questions from the audience. If your question was not asked, I'm sure the candidates will be available to you at the end of the evening. We will now go to closing statements. The candidates will give those in reverse order from their opening statements, which means that we will begin with Mr. Murdock.
Thank you. I'll say it again, this city is just an amazing and an outstanding city, and together, we can continue the legacy that we have here in Brea of sound financial planning with balanced budgets, and keeping our city streamlined and efficient, being nimble. When the economy shrinks, we shrink. And I think together, we can also continue with this forward-thinking, bold way of looking at things, and we can continue on with completing the tracks at Brea, our Rails to Trails program, continue working on building a new clubhouse, and a community center at the Birch Hills Golf Course, maybe a new technologically updated library. Forward, bold thinking is what makes this city what it is today, and I want to continue that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kim.
Brea is an amazing city. 30 years that I've been living here, I've witnessed some amazing accomplishments that was done in City of Brea. And that's mainly because the citizens of Brea are participants, and they make good choices throughout. And I like to work with everyone in Brea to continue that vision of excellence and making right decisions, and bring my expertise and experience to make sure that all those solutions are implemented correctly and all the details are looked at very closely.
Thank you. Ms. Hupp.
I think it's time that we brought some common sense and some good business sense to our council, and I think I have a proven track record in this community and that I can bring that back to us. And I think that I have the ability to work closely with the community as well, to make sure that we incorporate your thoughts and your ideas into what we do going forward.
Thank you. Mr. Harris.
Businesses are the backbone of the community. Yes, residences make up the community, and we live our lives here, but a good deal of the, we don't get the share of property tax revenues we deserve, I think. That's another, a fight for another day, but businesses are the backbone, and we're not doing enough to engage the business community and attract them. The thought I was about to finish is when we were about to do Brea Plaza Shopping Center, all these tenants were all cutting back on their plans because of the recession. We were the only commercial retail development in the entire county that leased up 100% in the middle of a recession at the top market rates in the county, and that was because we negotiated and worked for over a year with each tenant, their corporate boards, and made the deals that made sense for each of them. And that's kind of the way you have to do it. Businesses are like snowflakes. There's no two alike. They all have different criteria and objectives. You've got to sit down and work with them in the real world to attract them and do what's best. And I'll tell you, in the middle of that recession, when everyone was cutting back, the City of Brea was raising developer fees.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Parker.
Having good ideas is not enough. It's essential that you have the skills to develop relationships with your colleagues, to develop trust, and to have the ability to develop consensus-based solutions. I have a proven track record of actually doing that. During the years I was on the council, we accomplished many of the significant issues that have been mentioned tonight. We finished the community center. We finished the planning for the downtown. We started the planning and the acquisition of the property and the funding for the sports park. So I'd like to work with you to bring back a council that's committed to teamwork, values diverse points of view, and isn't afraid to engage in meaningful dialogue with the citizens of Brea. So please vote. So please vote for me, Glenn Parker, number three, in your ballot on November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vargas.
Brea, I'm your, I am your champion. I never left you. For the past decade, I've run exclusively positive campaigns and brought forward issues that have influenced Brea and the policy positions taken. Just look at the campaign going on right now, where everyone is talking about transparency and accountability. I've been talking about it for the last decade, which led to the passing of Measure T, which took away healthcare benefits to council members and kept executive compensation low. The council is claiming victory for pension reform, yet not one dime has been saved or diverted. I just want to serve. I joined the Navy Reserves and continue to serve. I'm a chief warrant officer. I have deployed three times in support of the War on Terror and yet each election, there's, at the end of the election, there's whisper campaigns that dishonor me and dishonor you as voters. And yet I still run. I run because this is my home and I will never quit on you. I run because this is your home and you need a champion who will stand for honesty and integrity. And I run because I have the will to be independent.
Thank you.
And I run because I am not a quitter.
Thank you.
And neither is Brea.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
On be, on behalf of the City of Brea, the Brea Chamber of Commerce, and the League of Women Voters of North Orange County, I'd like you all to join me in thanking all of our candidates this evening for running and participating in this one. Regardless of how you choose to vote this evening, regardless of how you choose to vote, excuse me, regardless of how you choose to vote, our system of democracy would not work if these people did not agree to run. Thanks also to our timekeepers and question sorters and thank you for being an attentive audience and for asking good questions. Please check out smartvoter.org, pick up your Easy Voter before you leave, and do not forget to vote. Drive safely and good evening.